Yep.
It's working.
Right on my side.
Yep.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the public hearing for fiscal two thousand twenty-four municipal and wastewater budget adoptions in the regular town council meeting. We are here in council chambers and welcome to the people via Zoom. One thing I need to mention is if everybody would please sign the public attendance sheet in the back corner, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, Madam clerk, can I please have a roll call?
Councilor Bragden.
He's excused.
Thank you. Councilor Danforth.
Here.
Chair Dubank.
Here.
Counselor Higgins.
Here.
Councilor Mador.
Here.
Councilor Pelletier.
Here.
If you could please uncover and stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people who would sustain us. One nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and...
Thank you. Mr. Manager, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, just one, Mr. Chairman, that would be an edit to the total on order seventy-four dash twenty twenty-three. Uh. Total swapped into this reflects what's actually in the budget, two hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars. It's the only adjustment. Okay.
Approval of the minutes for April twelfth, twenty twenty-three and April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three executive sessions.
I'm moving.
Motion made by Councilor Mador.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Higgins. I please have a vote. All those in favor? Five zero. Special presentation resolved number three, twenty twenty-three proclamation honoring Town Counselor Steve Golub. Council Danforth, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolve number three dash twenty twenty-three. A proclamation honoring Steve Golub for his leadership on the Millinocket Town Council. Whereas Steve Golub was elected to the Town Council in November of twenty seventeen, serving a one-year term, and reelected to the Council in twenty eighteen for three-year term and appointed to Council Chair in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one after being reelected in twenty twenty-one. And whereas Steve Golub as Council Chair developed a citizens guide to Town Council meetings that provided an overview of information related to council meetings so that citizens could better understand the process and consistently encourage public input to ensure that all perspectives, beliefs, and desires of the public were considered. And whereas Steve Golub through his work as Council Chair and leadership of the Millinocket Town Council fostered transparency, open discussion, and encouraged healthy debate while maintaining decorum. And whereas Steve Golub served as Chair during the COVID nineteen pandemic, which required a shift to holding virtual meetings and adapting to new ways of conducting town business while adhering to Robert's Rules of Order and navigating the council through the search, hiring, and onboarding of the new town manager. And whereas Steve Golub was instrumental in forming and participating in productive working communities, chairing both economic development and sustainability committees, resulting in numerous successes such as leading the Northern Border Regional Commission grant application that brought in more than two hundred thousand dollars in funding towards engineering design for the new airport terminal building, bringing grant-funded interns to Millinocket to work on projects identified in the Gazette here, surrounding food sovereignty, land planning, energy efficiency, and tree planting, spearheading the community guarding project, leading the effort to explore options for a new fire station, advocating to create the community initiatives draft a position, facilitated a crucial revision to the Millinocket's tax-acquired property policy, and equally critical recommendation to the Millinocket Town Council for a short-term rental ordinance. And whereas Steve Golub has dedicated these last several years for the betterment of the town of Millinocket above and beyond the norm, now therefore be it resolved that the Millinocket Town Council and council assembled April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three does hereby recognize, honor, and congratulate Steve Golub for his years of dedication to the town of Millinocket as a town counselor and counselor chair. And council.
Motion made by Councilor Danforth, seconded by Councilor Mador. Councilor Danforth, would you speak to the order, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. I want to say I greatly appreciated, um, Steve Golub's service to the, um, to the community and as a counselor, um, he challenged all of, he challenged, um, me. I know especially, I will talk about myself, to get out of my comfort zone up here, um, and he challenged the status quo. Um, I want to thank you for your leadership and service to the town. Um, as Chair of the Council, you led us through some really complex and difficult times and did so with transparency and humility. I witnessed firsthand the countless hours you spent working on projects, writing policies, creating information packets, and securing funds for the betterment of the town, the employees, and our citizens. You set the bar high when it comes to taking on projects and getting results from the committees you established. I'm proud to have served with you, learned from you, and to call you a friend. I hope, um, I can keep an eye on the future and can continue to imagine what we can become as a community, as you did. Best of luck in your new endeavors. Thanks, Steve.
Councilor Mador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, this is. It is deserved. What you've done or what you did do as a town counselor has probably pushed the town forward more in the last few years than probably the last twenty before. You. You dragged me kicking and screaming into the twenty-first century uh, on more than one subject. I'm not going to say that it was always an easy thing, but I do remember fondly our discussions in my backyard holding court while we were discussing the issues that were facing the town and doing it with smile on our face and the ability to have an open and honest discussion with each other and respect each other's opinions and views. While maybe not always agreeing. Uh, I'm not going to lie, I'm going to miss having you up here. I hold you as I hold several other previous counselors in high respect. I hold anybody actually who was ever sat on this dais. Disregard the fact that this is not an easy thing to do and the people who volunteer to do it and believe me for what the stipend is, it's a volunteer job. It's amazing. And you have, in my opinion, done so much for the community behind the scenes that this doesn't even dictate. Or this doesn't break forward. Want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And like Jane, I've come to respect you as a leader. I've come to respect you as a vader. But more importantly, I've come to respect you as a friend. And I look forward to many more. Once you get tired of gentleman farming and you want to go ahead and hold court in the backyard again, me and the dogs are always ready to and willing to have you come by. But until that time, thank you very much for your service. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Mador. Council Pelletier.
Well, Steve, I was on the council four years before you joined us and certainly agree with the past Council's statements here. And then some, uh. Everything in this proclamation is just statements of fact, but, uh, you've changed the hearts and minds of a lot of people and turned the council around. Those first two years that I served, a hundred and eighty degrees. Been aggressive and planned for a future, even though the time seemed bleak. And when others wanted to hold the line, brought in economic development forefront. And, uh, well, I'll continue being your friend, seeing you regularly, so thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Any other counsel comment? Seeing none down to the public? Public comment on the order? Mr. Manager.
Steve Golub is, I think, equally as misunderstood as he is intelligent. And I can say from my own experience in conversations in the community before and after of being offered this position to loathe Steve Golub is to not know Steve Golub. Time and time again, I had conversations with people who felt very strongly and adamantly opposed to his character from away. And the first question I would ask is, have you ever met Steve? And so often the response was, no, but I've heard dot, dot, dot. I've had the pleasure of spending countless hours agonizing and planning, dreaming what this town can be and will be. And that was driven by Mr. Golub. He instilled a level of certainty and, and, and profound proudness in me and confident in my ability to do what I do now and to figure it out as I go along. I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to work Steve on all of the incredible progress that this town has made since my involvement and am thankful for all of that. So far above and beyond the norm for involvement of a town counselor. Um. Very thankful, I'm very grateful for his time here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Down to the public? Please state your name and you know the deal.
Mr. Golub. Or whatever the concept is. There. So. Sometimes it does take some, uh, three. Five things. Vision.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I see, is that Jeff Campbell with his hand up?
Yeah.
With an actual hand up? All right, go ahead, Jeff.
Uh, Jeff Campbell, Airport Manager and Three, Juniper Street. Um, there are a multitude of things I'd like to thank Steve for, and I will do that with him personally, but I want it to be publicly known that as the airport manager for the town and, and the deals with the, uh, terminal building and all the rest of that, I, I can't thank Steve enough for all the things we've discussed, all the visions that were gone over, all the ideas and everything else, very much like manager, um. Uh, the manager said, um, I just really am very thankful for the work that he put into this community and, and the departments, the department heads and all the things. I just want to make sure that he is thanked publicly by me. Um, I really appreciate the work that he's put in and, uh, and I'm going to miss him, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other public comment? Seeing none back to, unless you would like to speak?
Oh, thanks, Senator. Uh. One of the... All. Um. That's good, right? I'm, uh, the... I think. And. In. On this. That's true. You. And. And. Whether some of the policies or some of the things some of us have, they have, but... But it's all for... Uh. I. A lot of great, whole thing. Probably. Uh, but I think those. This. This all. And. Well. Yeah. Videos forward. On the, uh, clearly about politics, things like that, but choosing people that understand that this is pretty big one. I'm informed. I'm just, uh, observing. I don't call you. Public, calling me public, I. All it.
Thank you, Mr. Golub. Back to the council. Um. All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstained? Four zero one. Council Danforth, would you please do the honors?
I appreciate it. Oh, I'm, I'm trying to get out in favor. That's what we're trying to get.
All right, order number seventy-two dash twenty twenty-three. Councilor Mador, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number seventy-two dash twenty twenty-three, providing for a public hearing. It is ordered the Millinocket Town Council enter into a public hearing for discussion on the FY twenty twenty-four municipal and wastewater budget. This will be a second reading.
Go ahead, second. Thank you, Councilor Mador, seconded by Counselor Danforth. In discussion, the discussion. Let's go for a vote. All those in favor? Five zero. Good. Uh.
Five fifty. All righty.
I'll just note before we get too far, well, before we move forward, I've received a couple of comments in the chat um, that is saying they were not able to hear the people at the podium or for the public mic, so we will, um, I will try to figure that out during our intermission a little later. And we certainly hear it here in the room, so I, I'm sure there's a, there's an explanation and then, you know, certainly there'll be audio on the, uh, recording that, that'll be posted on YouTube, so apologize for that inconvenience. Uh, so we'll move into the final budget presentation hearing here. Um, I'm going to go back into Zoom on my screen and share. We're doing this a little bit differently than we had leading up until this evening. Okay, so on the screen, we have the most recent, recent update to the budget summaries I've been presenting all along. Um, this is going to be a little bit higher level of, of the, the detail we had got into previously. You can see here, um, after the process of the workshops, um, the net expense, um, is at an increase of eight hundred forty-seven thousand, um, eight hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. The increase in revenue is now at nine hundred sixty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. Um, still the same decrease in the overlay that we had expected of forty-five thousand and the current decrease to the taxpayer of Millinocket is one hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred ninety-nine. In the original form, uh, that was presented, that decrease was just about three hundred thousand. After several workshops and the first special hearing, that decrease has dropped to one hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, I'll give a, a little bit of a insight to the future here. The original number, as today's math works, is equal to about a mil and a half. A lot of the concern of the public is how does it affect the mill rate? The new decrease here at a hundred and sixty-five, um, is about half of that, right? Um, now you can see that the municipal budget is still coming in at a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars less than previous year, which is a decrease. That's great. Um. We have, we expect a slight variance in the, um, municipal valuation at the state level. So there may be a slight adjustment again. That's yet to be determined. Um, and we know after the school's budget presentation and our last week's meeting, uh, that their total number is increased by a little over three hundred thousand dollars. So though this side is decreased, it's likely that you will see an increased tax bill. I like to get things right out of the way upfront as communicated as efficiently as possible. So that's our overview. Now we'll go into the individual departments. All right. You will see on the screen now, this is our expense budget. Well, I can blow it up a little bit more. Uh, just like in the previous presentation, we'll be going page by page. Uh, we've been through the details, uh, and scrutinized the details. I'll be reading, uh, much like last time, the name of the department, the total, uh, and, and we'll be moving forward. So, page one, general government, total spending, expected three hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred seventeen dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none move forward, please?
Page two. Elections and registrations, total total spending thirteen thousand ninety-one dollars and Town Clerk's Department total two hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Council Danforth?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to, um, suggest that we increase the town clerk's travel line by a thousand dollars. Um, knowing that she is enrolled and planning to attend the Institute for Civic Leadership. Uh, while most of the expenses are paid by Formane and other, uh, grant opportunities that the manager has explained to me, it won't be quite enough, um, based on its several months' travel and overnight in Augusta and southern part of the state. So I would suggest that we, um, increase her travel line to, um, fifteen hundred dollars, right? Add a thousand dollars to the travel line.
The council discussion. Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none. Drop all you guys in favor? Every direction, Mr. Manager, moving forward?
Page three, assessing total budget ninety-six thousand six hundred dollars.
Council discussion, seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none. Management move forward?
Page four, this is the municipal building, total budget one hundred thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. The audit, um, our audit will cost us twenty thousand dollars. Uh, legal expenses, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Council discussion, seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none. Management move forward, please?
Page five, administration. Um. Eighty-five thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, please move forward?
Page six, planning code development. Sixty-six thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars.
The council discussion. Down to the public? Seeing none, Mr. Manager, move forward?
Page seven, economic development, eighty-two thousand four hundred eighty dollars and community initiatives director, eighty-eight thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars.
Council Danforth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's my understanding as well that our community initiatives director is attending ICL, Institute for Civic Leadership, and, um, will be getting scholarships and grant funds between five and six thousand dollars, but still needs travel funds. I would increase that line by a thousand as well.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none, drop all, council. But, Mr. Manager, you have your direct.
Sir.
Moving forward?
That brings us to page eight. This is the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Uh, expected for FY twenty-four in spending, that'll be seven thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars. Also, uh, this is our police department contract and that's seven hundred ninety thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public? Management move forward, please? Manager move forward, please.
Page nine, fire and ambulance. Seven hundred forty thousand seven hundred ten dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Mr. Manager, move forward, please.
Page ten, fire department, sixty-nine thousand one hundred seventeen dollars.
Council discussion. Down to the public. Mr. Manager, move forward, please.
Page eleven, ambulance, two hundred fourteen thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, move forward, please.
Uh, page twelve, community services, five hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. Insurances, one hundred and ten thousand one hundred forty-five dollars. Uh, and enforcement, uh, look, enforcement officials, seven thousand eighty dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, move forward, please.
Page thirteen, dog constable, fourteen thousand nine hundred seventy dollars. Fringe benefits, thirty-five thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars.
Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Mr. Manager, move forward, please.
Page fourteen, Public Works Administration, one hundred thirteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Garage maintenance, thirty-four thousand dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, move forward, please.
Page fifteen, Public Works Roads and Construction. One million three hundred fifteen thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, move forward, please.
Page sixteen, transfer site, four hundred seventy thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars.
Any council discussion? Down to the public. Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, move forward, please.
Age seventeen, library, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Debt and interest, one hundred thirty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-three dollars.
Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Please address yourself and your address, please. Mr. Dumey, any other public comment? Please address yourself and your address, please.
Seven. We're gonna make sure that.
Bruce Levitt, seventy-two Ruska Avenue, Millinocket, Maine. Stereo. Uh, Bruce Levitt.
I'd rather read it from you, Bruce.
You only have five hundred words, so just.
Okay, ready to vote, yeah? Uh, can you hear me?
Sound good.
Okay. Horizon call.
So just for the record, uh, address who you are and your address again.
I did that twice. Uh, Bruce Levitt, seventy-two Ruska Avenue, Millinocket, Maine. You're welcome. Uh, I never agreed in the first place with the town getting rid of the, uh, library, uh, but that's not part of this, but, uh, and I haven't been up the library since they've remodeled it. I only know that, uh, previously when I went to the library, it is an important part of the town, the same way as, uh, a lot of people don't think the, uh, on Central Street. The museum is part of the town, but, uh, both the museum, the library and from what I've read, they work very hard. I, I'm not sure what Rayell's uh, interaction was with them, uh, and I haven't had any and that could be something he could talk with the town manager if he hasn't already, but, uh, I, uh, support the increase. I, I don't like to see a lot of increases, but, uh, the library is an important part of the town. It is, I think, something that especially in this day and age, uh, draws people into town as far as, uh, the internet, uh, you know, you can go up there as well as home and, uh, borrow books from the state library, uh, from the U S, uh, library and, uh, all across the world really. So I, I, I think it's important. I'm not sure what the extra is for, but I, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other public comment? Ms. Sullivan?
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four, uh, Sunset Drive. I absolutely support the increase. Um, one example, when we had twenty-two below zero weather and I inquired where, um, uh, anyone who needed it to get warming. It was not the town that responded to me. It was the library that was going to be open for people. Um, the library does a lot more for this town than just lend books. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Goldie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With permission, may I speak, being a non-resident? Steve Goldie, not a resident of Millinocket, no taxpayer. Um, I appreciate what Bruce mentioned. Probably the first thing we've ever agreed on. Glad we found something. Um, it has happened, I guess. Point is, um, the library is one of those examples that shows an investment into the community that does translate into economic development. Difference between being conservative and being proactive when it comes to investing in your community. If you want to have an analogy of running a town like a business, you cannot have a business that has very low inventory and hardly anything to offer. You have to invest in what the town offers. This is one of those things. So I appreciate that you are keeping, uh, the amount at one twenty-five. Um, this is one of the most crucial things that people look at when they come to move to a community is what is the leadership of the town trying to do for myself and for my family? Um, when we're looking at preventative measures that a community is trying to take to, uh, prevent people from getting into drugs and alcohol. This is one of those things. The programs go far beyond books, as has been mentioned. Um, so I appreciate that the town has shown their commitment to the library in the many ways that it adds value to the community far beyond what the taxpayers are paying for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldie. Any other public comment?
Scott Levitt, three thirty Congress Street. Uh, I've been up the library. It's been, been marvelous. I brought my grandkids. They've got good programs. But last week I was talking to a couple of people and that and I said, and like, uh, Ms. Sutherland said, is it Ms. Sutherland Sanders or whatever, said that it was a warm and place and everything and plus it's got computers there. They got this program. They got this, that program. It's not a library anymore. It's a community center. It's a center where people go. And I think, uh, we gotta take serious looking to say, hey, you know, the library's grown, but it also has become a community center with people going up there on cold days and the town's asking this, the town's asking that. So I think, you know, I agree with the twenty-five percent because I, I, my grandkids go there and they, they've, they've had a great time up there. But I think it's time to look at a library as a community center than set a, set of a library that's just books, because it's not just books. It's a community. It's all for the community and that's what we have to look at is the community way. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levitt. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Uh, so, uh, the council's wishes to keep it at one twenty-five. Majority of the council says one twenty-five, Mr.
And moving forward.
Moving forward, please.
Page eighteen, general assistance, seventeen thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Public health and welfare, eight thousand four hundred fifteen dollars.
Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none. Please move forward, Miss Manager.
Age nineteen, cemetery, sixty-five thousand three hundred forty dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public.
Just a quick tap on that bottom.
I want to get the right one.
Perfect.
Uh, getting older, you can't see, uh, I know this probably has more to do with that. Oh. Stole the second Bruce, Bruce Levitt, seventy-two Ruska Avenue, Millinocket. Uh, I'm not sure if this would apply more to the cemetery committee, but it's something they uh, should, uh, look at. It, it's, it's kinda in here, but, and I know most have been up the cemetery, but I think it's the time the town council takes a serious look at the trees and shrubs up there if they haven't already. Uh, I know on the backside towards Little Italy that, uh, there are a couple up there that are eight or nine feet high and totally cover the stones, but and, and I'm not sure if there's money in the budget for that, but I think uh, the town, the town does have some requirements in there as far as, uh, the size you can plant there, I believe, but I think some, a lot of them should be pulled. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me, um, let me ask that to the public works director. Um, is, is what Mr. Levitt is addressing for maintenance in, in the budget for you?
Brian Dupre, the public works director. Uh, we can remove any of the shrubs you want. We do have rules that have not been fully enforced over the years and some of the shrubs are big and need to be, need to be removed.
And so that's something that you can address with the public works director. Yeah. Any other public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Manager, you have your directions.
Fantastic. Okay. Page twenty. Recreation, two hundred three thousand two hundred fifty-five dollars. And snowslide ATV program, eighty-nine thousand two hundred eighty dollars.
Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none, Miss Manager, please move forward.
Page twenty-one, airport operations, hundred ninety thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. Airport business, eighty thousand four hundred dollars.
Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, please move forward.
This is final page of the expense report, page twenty-two of twenty-two. This is holiday observation and events, twenty thousand dollars. Capital improvements, five hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, five, excuse me, five hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars. Uh, special capital improvements, five, that's five hundred forty-seven thousand seventy-four dollars. The county tax, which is now at three hundred seven thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars uh, for a grand total in expense for the municipal budget. Eight billion one hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars.
Any council discussion? Council Mador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just would like to point out when we look at the, uh, the grand total of the eight million one hundred fifty-four thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars, we also look at the, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four budget variance of a negative four hundred nineteen thousand two hundred eighteen dollars. I think that's very important. I think it shows a great deal of the work that's been done to build this budget. Is a, a, I wouldn't want to say conservative, uh, viewpoint, but I would like to say that we have gone ahead and done our due diligence as far as trying to make sure that this budget fits within the confines of taxpayers of the town of Millinocket and not put the grease on from the municipal side of the budget. Uh, if there is any re-increase to this budget, it is certainly not from this line or this budget. And, uh, I'd like to give credit to the manager, the treasurer and the staff for working on this budget and bringing it in where they did. Uh, I think all in all, it enabled council to go ahead and make the modifications that we needed to make still stay under last year's budget. I think that's excellent work on all points. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Mador. I will, I will echo Councilor Mador's, but I will actually say thank you for bringing in a more conservative budget than what I would have anticipated. Um, Council Pelletier.
Just slight correction, the total should be eight million one hundred fifty-six thousand with a two thousand we added.
I was gonna.
Oh, good catch.
So that's gonna be plus two thousand from the changes that we made in this public hearing. Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public. Address yourself and your address, please.
Bruce Levitt, seventy-two Ruska Avenue. Uh, I do like a decrease, but I'd like to know also if this has to do with the re-evaluation somewhat the town did over the last year, the thirty percent, twenty percent and the ten percent. Whether that, that, that actually reflect, uh, reflects a decrease or possibly an increase or where, where it stands with the, like, the thirty percent that was out in, uh, the, the swampy area.
Yeah, so it's best, I think the manager touched on it before, that although that we do have a decrease in spending, there is an anticipation that the mill rate itself may actually increase. Am I correct in saying that? That's a variant that we don't know just yet. Uh,
I would probably choose to word it differently. It's a, it's a, it's a complete unknown at this point in time. Um, what you're saying is relative to the conversation, certainly. Given fair market value and, um, and the real estate market that has been here even ongoing since that adjustment was made. We may still have a slight variance in our valuation compared to what the state of Maine has us rated at. We're less than ten percent. Don't quote me on that, please, Brian, if you're on there. Um, but yes, it's factored in because it kinda all washes in together. I also.
Clarified it for me.
Also, um, you know, we do have, we do have our next. Re-evalu- total re-evaluation of the town starting over this summer. Uh, more info to come, so, so that will, that will all play out over the course of two years and then we'll see an adjustment. Valuation and mill rate meeting in the middle.
Council Pelletier, did you have some to add? Elsa?
Just a quick.
Okay. Scott Levitt, three thirty Congress Street. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address a question to. Councilor Madore. I just, uh, wanted to clear something up. Okay, thank you. Council Madore, I just. I'm just, from what you were saying. With the municipality. Not increasing. The tax. Is that? Your opinion that the town is not gonna, the municipality will not. Increase the tax if there's an increase in the tax?
No, what I basically said was that I was focusing on the municipal budget. And the fact that the municipal budget has come in at almost. Four hundred thousand, well, actually a little over four hundred thousand, the variance less than the previous year. Shows that the town has done a good job of try to keep. Taxes under control from the municipal side. Now. In saying that. If the school budget comes in. Three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars over last year.
Right.
Then you have a situation where if the gates, any saving that the town may have been able to do on the municipal side. And the tax, the mill rate may go up slightly or maybe drop down. It still has, it's, it's in the hands right now after we do this budget. Of the assessor. To determine what the mill rate will be going forward. Uh, along with the town manager. And. We can't as a council. Give you guarantees of whether the mill rate is gonna stay level, it's gonna drop, or it's gonna go up. All I can do and all I can say as one counselor individually. Is we did the best we could with this budget, keep it below last year's. Level.
Right.
So they're trying to go ahead and say, I would dare say that if all things stayed equal and there was no increase with the school whatsoever. We'd be dropping probably. A mil and a half, maybe even two mil on this budget. If nothing changed, but again, we haven't got the school's final numbers yet.
I was just wondering, I just don't wanna.
No, I'm not, I'm not declaring a holiday by any stretch of the imagination.
I'm just saying, I don't wanna. Play the blame game, you know what I'm saying? That people's gonna look and say, oh, the municipality did great, the school didn't. So the school's to blame for our increase, which they wouldn't be. Because they gotta look out for the welfare of our children. I, that's all I'm just asking you is if it does. If the school budget goes over and that, that. Is the counselor. Gonna blame the school for not bringing in a big budget? A smaller budget? That's all I'm saying is, we went through it a long time ago with the school and the council. I don't wanna see that again. I just wanna say, hey, increase is gonna come with the reevaluations and that, but nobody's to blame. Because the school's gotta take care of the welfare of our children. That's all I'm saying. It just sounded like you was just saying. Well, give us some credit, which I do because it's now, but I just don't want it to fall on the school. You know, and what, what I'm trying to say. That's all. So. Sure. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just. In response, I'd just like to clarify. I don't, I don't view this as any sort of. Placing blame on anything. It, it really is an unknown at this point. However. The number one question I'm asked. Day in and day out is about. Tax increase. Bill rate. And spending. Year versus year. So. When I have information and insight, I try to get it out as early as possible. So that it's not a shock when somebody opens an envelope. From the mail and they see an increase in their tax bill. Uh, I, I, and I, and I say this in the most respectful way for the educators and, and everybody involved. It's not a blame game. It, it, it's just expressing the information that's available.
Council Pelletier.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify some. Misconceptions here. Revaluation has nothing. With. Budget. Your budget is less than it was last year? That's fine. It does affect your taxes in the way you're thinking. Simply because. By state mandate, we have to have reevaluation every so number of years. We've been decades not doing that. That's created the inequity of two similar houses side by side. Being worth the very same money. One because of, uh. Homestead exemption and veterans exception. And never having done anything to reevaluate their property value. Maybe paying under five hundred bucks. While a neighbor, maybe somebody that's new to the community. Bought the property. And got a value that. Purchase price, let's say. And now he's paying over a thousand. Both houses are worth the same on the market. That's why state law. Wants you to value your. Assessments as close to market value as possible. And if you don't do that, like you, like both. Risk your revenue sharing money from state. Lose that. So. What's happened in the last couple of years, six percent. And last year, the ten, twenty, thirty percent. Is in effect to mitigate. Chart pain gonna happen in the next few years. Everybody's home because they're gonna have. An individual revaluation of their home. Not a, a zoned area like we did. Because we know homes sell for on Morgan Lane. Thirty percent higher than downtown here. So that's what that's all about. So no matter what happens, when we go through this evaluation. Some people might have been brought up a little too high. Will come down to what it is for their home. So. Valuation. Really has nothing to do with total budget. Minute of budget that's less than what it was last year, that's the number of dollars we're gonna collect. Who pays what portion of that budget has to do with your revaluation of value of your property? Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna add a little bit to that. I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, because I was the only counselor that asked for a three percent decrease. Of the school budget when it was presented, um. Knowing what I know about budgeting, um, there's always some kind of buffer. There's always some kind of fluff involved, um. Because money doesn't grow on trees. Um, nobody hears printing money. This is all taxpayer money that's being used. It's out of your pocket, your pocket, your pocket. Um. So when taking that into consideration, um. When people are spending money that's not. Theirs, you can build a budget that's a hopeful budget and then you, there's a budget that you know you need to work with. And so knowing that about budgeting, um. There's always a little bit that somebody can cut. So on the best interest of everybody in town, not. Just the people that have grandparents or people that are parents that have kids in school. Certainly not the educators because I'm, I'm a big fan of educators, you know what I mean? But I just think if, if everybody can cut a little bit, then we'll all be a little bit better off, so. They have another hearing coming up soon. Um, we have school board members in attendance. You guys certainly reach out to us. And, uh, give us your perspective on things, which we take. Oh, heartedly. I see, I see sometimes hearts and minds change right on the dais here. I'm certainly. The school board can do the same thing, not to speak for them. I'm certainly not against them and I think that we're all working well with them. So it's, it's gonna be one of those situations where it's not a blame game. It's just if everybody can cut a little bit, then it will save everybody a little bit on the backend. That was my only perspective on it. Um. Certainly as citizens, you're free to reach out to them. There's gonna be a vote coming up. I would love to see a, a. Good turnout for a school vote. Um, it's generally the same. Hundred, couple hundred people that show up to vote. So. People really need to, as involved as people and as a great thing and like, um, like Steve and everybody mentioned earlier. People have become more and more involved with town government, which is a great thing. Now, if you can become involved with your school government, because they're just a department of the town. We cannot. Dictate what they do. We can only ask. So, um. With that being said, I hope that clarifies for the public, for those viewing that we as a council, I don't think anybody, I haven't met anybody up here that is against anybody or wants to blame anybody. We just all wanna work together and, and. Do what's best for the town. So hopefully that addresses some of your concern. Yeah. Alright. So. Are we ready to move on to? Yes.
Is there anybody?
Steve Goldie, not a resident of the town. Um. Just to add to that, because I agree with everything you said. Critiquing a budget is very different than critiquing educators or town employees. It's great when people are involved, as has been mentioned. And I think it's perfectly reasonable. To critique a process or a budget. If there are reasonable things within it that you might find at fault or can be changed. Critiquing that does not mean that you are against education. It does not mean you're against the town or you're against the town employees. It's perfectly normal and fine to voice concerns over a budget and the process in which it was created. Thank you.
Mr. Goldie. Are we ready to move on to the revenues, sir?
I sure hope so.
Let's talk about the good stuff.
Alright. Um, let me. Share my screen again. Alright, we are now looking at the. FY twenty-four revenue budget. This is money into the town. Um, page one has general government. At. Three million. Thirty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-one dollars. As well as. Town clerk's department. Um, nine hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred fifty dollars.
Council discussion? Seeing none down in the public? Also seeing none, manager, move forward, please.
This is page two, assessing. Seven hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars. Municipal building sixty-two thousand seven hundred forty dollars. Planning code development. Three thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars. Economic development, one hundred twenty thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars.
Council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, please move forward.
Okay, page three. Fire department, six thousand five hundred dollars. Ambulance, three hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none. Mr. Manager, please move forward.
Page four. Public Works Administration. Twenty-five thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Public Works Roads and Construction, forty-five thousand dollars. Transfer site, one hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
Council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none. Manager, please move forward.
Page five. General Assistance, twelve thousand five dollars. Cemetery, twenty-two thousand. Recreation, one thousand. Snowslide ATV, seventy-six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars.
Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, please move forward.
Uh. This is. Page six. Airport operations, that's a zero. Um, airport business, one hundred fifteen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. Uh, jumping to special capital improvements, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, for a grand total, expected revenue FY twenty-four budget. Five million eight hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred thirty dollars.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, please move forward.
Alright, that. Concludes the municipal expense and revenue. We'll move to wastewater expense. Page one. Wastewater Administration, ninety-eight thousand one hundred dollars. Wastewater Protection, twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars.
Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, please move forward.
Page two. Wastewater Operations. Three hundred seventy-five thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars. Wastewater Pump Stations. Seventy-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public? Name and address, please.
Need to see the button this time. Bruce Levitt, seventy-two Ruska Avenue, Millock, Maine. I was just wondering, um. With the money involved in the pump stations, if we're still having trouble in the pine substation? Or not?
Are you referring to the, the clogs due to non-flushable wipes and other things? Um, actually, our, our, um. Wastewater Superintendent, Mr. Ingles is on Zoom. Jason, do you mind speaking to that?
No, uh, Jason Ingles Superintendent. Uh, no, we're not having any issues over there when, uh, the pines at this time. Things seem to be running well. Um, I know Public Works has been over there pushing the. Slow runner, you know, weekly, so, but everything seems to be working pretty good.
Okay, I was just concerned that that might have to come up if there's still problems. Thank you.
Thank you. I was, good question because I hadn't heard nothing about it lately.
Jason, could you mute your microphone, please? Thank you.
It's a good question, Bruce, because I hadn't heard anything in a while either, so. Thank you for asking that. Okay, so any other public comment? Manager, please move forward.
Page three, wastewater collection. Thirty thousand eight hundred dollars. Wastewater Debt Service, two hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars. And wastewater capital improvement, nine hundred thirteen thousand. Dollars. Uh, grand total expense, one million seven hundred forty-one thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Any other council comment? Seeing none down to the public? Mr. Manager, please move forward.
Moving on to the. Wastewater Revenue Report. Uh, for FY twenty-four, this is a one pager wastewater administration. One million eight hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Wastewater Pump Stations. Three thousand dollars. Grand total revenues, expected FY twenty-four wastewater treatment. One million eight hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Any council comment? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none, Mr. Manager, please move forward.
That concludes our presentation this evening. If you'd like to go over the individual items in, and again, it was reported in the expense.
It was reported in the expense.
Yep, I'm, I'm happy to show that document. You give me a moment.
Would the public like to see the five-year capital plan? It was shown last time and. Okay, I think we're ready to move forward.
Okay. Um, then that concludes. The. Uh, special presentation of the. FY twenty-four proposed budget. I'll remind. Uh, that as presented. We are looking at an overall decrease in the municipal budget of. One hundred and sixty. Two thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you. I just wanna make an announcement that after we get through, through this next set of orders and before we move on to the regular town council meeting, I will be taking. A ten-minute break, um, in between. Yes, Miss Sullivan?
Okay. And heal up.
You need to go to the bathroom. You need to go to the bathroom.
Um, I wasn't sure where in this presentation to ask my question. Um. Does the the new law that they're talking about? In the state government as far as holding property tax levels up for senior citizens, is that going to affect? This budget in any way?
I'll let the manager answer that when he does his manager's report.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. You're hired. Alright, so. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we are going to move on to order number seventy-three dash twenty twenty-three. Council Danforth, would you please read?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I wanna ask a question before I start. Is it okay to start with the new total for this? Because in, yeah, so we don't, okay.
So the only addition would be the.
One thousand dollars, so I'm gonna add it.
The town clerk line, correct?
Right.
Yes, and to the total.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You'll also make an adjustment to the Community Issues Director.
Correct.
Department as we, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And also I need to read each and every line in the dollar amount, correct? It's best. Okay, let's get started. Order number seventy-three dash twenty twenty-three, providing for general administration. It is ordered that one million seventy-five thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars is hereby raised and appropriated, and the officers are authorized to spend said amount for the general administration departments. Of Millinocket as listed below for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Medor.
Um, I haven't read all the lines. Oh, yeah, I'm not done reading. Yeah, so I will continue. General. General Administration, one oh one, general government, three hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars. One oh three, elections and registration, thirteen thousand ninety-one dollars. One oh four, Town Clerks. Two hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. One oh seven, assessing, ninety-six thousand six hundred dollars. One oh eight, Municipal Building, one hundred thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. One oh nine, Audit, twenty thousand. One eleven, Legal Services, seventy-five thousand. One twelve, Administration, eighty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-five. Three hundred, line three hundred, um, fringe, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-five thousand for a grand total of one million seventy-five thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars.
Oh, I see.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Medor. Council discussion. Seeing nothing down to the public. Also seeing nothing. All those in favor? Five zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to read this order as well with the change.
Are you prepared to? Okay.
Order number seventy-four dash twenty twenty-three, providing for community and economic development. It is ordered that. Two hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars is hereby raised and appropriated, and the offices are authorized to spend said amount for the Community and Economic Development Departments of Millinocket as listed below for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Community and Economic Development. One fourteen, Planning Code Enforcement, sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Economic, one fif- excuse me, one fifteen, Economic Development, eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. One eighteen, Community Initiative Director, eighty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. One nineteen, ARPA, seven thousand two hundred and eighty-eight. Two thirteen, Enforcement Officials, seven thousand eighty-three dollars for a grand total of two hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second.
Motion by by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Medor. Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? Five zero. Order number seventy-five dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Order number seventy-five twenty twenty-three, providing for public safety and protection. It is ordered that two million five hundred and three thousand eighty-seven dollars hereby raised and appropriated. And the offices are authorized to spend said amount for the Public Safety and Protection Departments of Millinocket as listed below for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Public Safety Protection, line two hundred and one. Police, seven hundred thousand ninety-eight seventy-four. Line number two oh three, Fire, sixty-nine thousand one seventeen. Line number two oh four, Ambulance, two hundred thousand, two hundred fourteen thousand two seventy-one. Line number two oh five, Fire and Am- Ambulance General, seven hundred forty thousand seven ten. Line number two oh six, Community Services, five hundred sixty-three thousand. Line two oh nine, Insurances, one hundred and ten thousand one forty-five. Line number two fourteen, Dog Constable, fourteen thousand nine seventy, for a total of two million five hundred thousand five hundred thirty oh eighty-seven.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Medor. Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Council Danforth, would you read order number seventy-six, please?
Order number seventy-six dash twenty twenty-three, providing for Public Works and Airport Departments. It is ordered that two million two hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars is hereby raised and appropriated. And the offices are authorized to spend said amount for the Public Works and Airport Departments of Millinocket as listed below for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Public Works and Airport, four oh two, Public Works Administration, one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Four oh three, Public Works Garage, thirty-four thousand. Four oh seven, Public Works Roads, one million three hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Four oh nine, Transfer Site, four hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and forty-two. Nine oh two Cemetery, sixty-five thousand three hundred and forty. One eleven oh one Airport Operations, one hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven. Eleven oh two Airport Business, eighty thousand four hundred dollars for a total of two million two hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Medor. Any council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public, or you have? Down to the public, all those in favor? Five zero. Order number seventy-seven, Council Medor, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-three, providing for Community and Recreation Services. It is ordered that four hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred dollars hereby raised and appropriated, and the offices are authorized to spend said amount. For the Community and Recreation Services Department of the Town of Millinocket as listed below for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Community and Recreation Services, five oh one, Library, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Eight fifteen, General Assistance Aid, seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty. Eight sixteen, Public Health and Welfare Agency, eight thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. One zero zero two Recreation, two hundred and three thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. One zero zero nine, Snowmobile and ATV Program, eighty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty. And one one zero six, Holiday Observation and Events, twenty thousand for a grand total of four hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred dollars.
Motion made by Council Medor, seconded by Council Higgins. Council comment? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Order number seventy-eight twenty twenty-three, providing for debit and interest. It is ordered that. Hundred and thirty-nine thousand six seventy-three is hereby raised and appropriated, and the offices are authorized to spend said amount for debit services and interest, Department of Millinocket. As listed below for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Debit and interest, line hundred seven hundred. Line number seven hundred, debit and interest, hundred and thirty-nine thousand six seventy-three.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Medor. Council discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-three, providing for capital improvement departments. It is ordered that one million one hundred forty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars hereby raised and appropriated. And the officers are authorized to spend said amount for the Capital Improvements Departments of Millinocket as listed below for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Capital Improvements Departments, thirteen hundred, Capital Improvements, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Thirteen oh one, Special Capital Improvements, five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Five hundred and forty-seven thousand seventy-four dollars. Total, one million one hundred forty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Medor. Commentary discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Order number eighty twenty twenty-three, providing for anticipated revenues and transfers. It is ordered that the overall anticipated revenues and transferred in the estimated amount, five million eight hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars is approved, and the offices are authorized to spend. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Medor. Council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty-one dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Order number eighty-one dash twenty twenty-three, providing for transfer of funds from design- from the designated dog fee revenue reserve account for the care of animals. It is ordered that four thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars be transferred from the designate- designated dog fee revenue reserve account into the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to provide for eligible cost in the care of animals. Note, these funds are already included in the in the order authorizing anticipated revenues and transfers. This order is offered because the funds will be taken from a designated reserve account, which requires specific town council approval.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Medor. Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty-two dash twenty twenty-three, Council Medor, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number eighty-two dash twenty twenty-three, providing for transfer of funds from fund balance account. It is ordered that one million one hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars is transferred from the assigned fund balance into the general fund budget for FY twenty-four. Note, these funds are already included in the order authorizing anticipated revenues and transfers. Order is offered because the funds will be taken from an assigned and unassigned. Fund balance account, which requires specific town council approval.
Second.
Motion made by Council Medor, seconded by Council Danforth. Any council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty-three dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Order number eighty-three twenty twenty-three, fiber authorization for county tax. It is ordered that three hundred and seven thousand forty-four sixty-five is hereby raised and appropriated to the authorized offices to spend. For line number one thousand two oh one, county tax assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Medor. Council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty-four dash twenty twenty-three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number eighty-four twenty twenty-three, fighting for acceptance of state of main funds. It is ordered that the Town of Millinocket. Town Finance Director and Town Treasurer is authorized to accept. And such acceptance is deemed to have been appropriated revenue and or subsidies for the ensuing fiscal year such funds as. Usable Revenue Sharing Funds, Local Road Assistance Program, General Purpose Aid to Education. Civil Emergency Funds, Snowmobile Registration, Pre-Growth Reimbursement, General Assistant Reimbursement, Veteran Exemption Reimbursement, Homestead Act Reimbursement. State and Federal Grants and and other state of main funds as are available at a future date and to authorize the officer to spend said so. These monies are currently anticipated in the above revenue order and allows the town to accept these monies for use with, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Proposed budget acceptance of any new monies will be authorized only by council order.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier and Council Pelletier, uh, Medor seconded. Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty-five dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Order number eighty-four dash twenty twenty-three. Writing for a written policy concerning disbursement of state fees.
Mr. Chairman. May I move to waive the whereas's and go right down to the now therefore it is ordered?
Second.
Motion, seconded. All those in favor? Proceed, Council Danforth.
Thank you. Now therefore it is ordered that the following written adopted concerning the dis- this disbursement of state fees. Number one, the treasurer will prepare a written weekly. Prepare a warrant weekly to disperse state fees. Number two, the weekly warrant for fees shall be reviewed and approved by the Finance Director. Number three, upon arrival of the weekly warrant for state fees by the Finance Director, any member of the ad hoc warrant subcommittee established pursuant to chapter twenty-nine A of the Administrative Code may review. And approve the weekly warrant for state fees and document his or hers, his or her approval by signing the warrant. Number four, the treasurer is authorized to disperse state fees each week upon presentation of a warrant. For that purpose which has been approved by the Finance Director and signed by any member of the ad hoc ad hoc warrant committee. Number five, any error in any weekly warrant for the state fees shall be corrected by the treasurer on the week, on the next weekly warrant for state fees after discovery of the area, of the era. Warrants. Number six, warrants for the state fees approved pursuant to this policy are not su- subject to review and approval pursuant to. Chapter twenty dash A of the Administrative Code. Number seven, this policy shall be reviewed and voted on annually by the counselor, by the council.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Medor. Any council discussion? Council Pelletier.
Number three should be upon approval versus upon arrival.
Yes.
Thank you. Did I totally skip over that one? Upon approval, thank you.
Let number three reflect that it should read upon approval. Alright, any other council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty-six dash twenty twenty-three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number eighty-six dash twenty twenty-three, providing for disbursement of employees' wages and benefits. Whereas the town treasurer may disperse money only on the authority of a warrant voted and signed by a majority of the council. And whereas the council signs warrants on a bi-weekly basis, and whereas employees are paid on a weekly basis. Now therefore is ordered pursuant to Title thirty-eight, dash A, section five six zero three two A one. That the town treasurer is authorized to disperse wages. Withholding required by law on the authority of a warrant signed by the town manager.
Second.
Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Higgins. Council discussion. Seeing none down to the public? Also seeing none back to the council. All those in favor? Is that a yes, Council Pelletier? You in favor? Thank you. Five zero. Order number eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, Council Medor, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-three, providing for payment of property taxes for multiple years. It is ordered that we, the municipal officials of the Town of Millinocket, upon request of the tax collector and town treasurer of said town, hereby authorize and direct said. Tax collector and town treasurer pursuant to Title thirty-six, MRS A, section nine oh six. To apply any tax payments received from an individual as payment for any property tax against outstanding or delinquent taxes due. On said property in chronological order, beginning with the oldest unpaid tax bill. Provided however, that there are no such payment may be applied. To any tax for which an abatement application or appeal is pending unless the, unless approved in writing by the taxpayer.
Motion made by Council Midor, seconded by Council Danforth. Council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public. Also seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Order number eighty-eight, twenty twenty-three, providing for wastewater department anticipated revenues and transfers. Is ordered that the overall anticipated revenues and transfers as listed below in the estimate amount of one million eight hundred thirty-nine thousand is approved for F Y twenty twenty-four for the wastewater department. Times number twenty-one, twenty-one hundred through fourteen hundred fees, one million fifty thousand Dollars. Fourteen oh one interest, thirty day notice, ten thousand. Fourteen oh two investment interest, sixteen thousand. Fourteen oh three lean cost revenue, ten thousand. Fourteen oh five grant, six hundred thousand. Fourteen oh six bond proceeds, a hundred and fifty thousand. Line number twen- twenty-five hundred oh five Oh five twelve wastewater. R V dump, three thousand, total of one million eight hundred thousand thirty-nine thousand.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Midor. Council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Also seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-three, Council Palatier, would you please read?
Order number eighty-nine, twenty twenty-three, providing for wastewater department operations. It is ordered that one million seven hundred forty-one thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars is hereby appropriate for wastewater operations expenditures For fiscal year twenty twenty-four where the department is listed below. Twenty-one hundred administration, ninety-eight thousand one hundred dollars, twenty-two hundred protection insurance, twenty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. Twenty-four hundred operations of plant, here on seventy-five thousand four hundred eighty-nine. Twenty-five hundred bump stations, seventy-eight thousand one hundred, twenty-six hundred collections, thirty thousand eight hundred. Twenty-seven hundred debt service, twenty-sixteen thousand nine hundred sixty-nine, twenty-eight hundred capital improvements, nine hundred thirteen thousand. Total of one million seven hundred forty-one thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars.
Motion made by Council Palatier, seconded by Council Higgins. Council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Also seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Order number ninety, dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Order number ninety dash twenty twenty-three, providing for a payment of sewer bills from multiple bills. It is ordered that we, the municipal office, officers of the town of Millinocket, upon request of the tax collector and town treasurer of said town, Hereby authorize and direct said tax collector and town treasurer to credit sewer payments to accounts in the same manner as real estate payments. And whereas the real estate tax payments are allocated to, to the oldest outstanding tax bill, and whereas the statutory reference in section one oh four dash sixteen Of the sewer ordinance has not been updated to reflect repeal of title thirty M R S A And enactment of title thirty dash A. Now therefore it is ordered as follows. The tax collector and town treasurer are hereby directed to credit payments for sewer system use charges in chronological order, Beginning with the oldest unpaid sewer system use charge, provided however, that no such payment May be, may be applied to any charge for which an abatement application or appeal is pending unless approved in writing by the sewer fee payer. It is further ordered that the sewage system rates, fees, or user charges not paid within ninety days of when due Shall be collected in accordance with chapter one oh four, section one oh four dash sixteen of the Millinocket Code and title thirty Dash A, M R S A, section three four zero six.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Also seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor? Five zero. Before we head into the regular town council meeting, we will be recessed until seven fifteen.
Would you mind if I had a couple of those bandings? Thank you, sir. Welcome everybody back to the regular town council meeting that we are getting ready to start with. The public Um, hearing portion is commenced and we will get right to the invigorating manager's report.
We can get some theme music. Sorry, it's late, Diana. Um. I just have a, 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 a handful of updates. I don't plan on taking a long time with this this evening. Update on our congressionally directed spending request. Uh, Senator King has requested that our application For the restructuring, uh, reconstruction of our downtown corridor, that's the roads, sidewalks, um, the lights. Um, that be funded by the Uh, Senate Transportation Housing and Urban Development Subcommittee on Appropriations. Uh, that doesn't necessarily guarantee the funding for our project, however, it moves it forward to the next round And gives us some, some good hope, uh, that we will continue to be successful. Um, from there, it goes to, um, once it passes the committee, it will need to go to a vote of senate and the house. Um, so stay tuned. I'll provide updates along the way. That's a Incredibly exciting project that we are very, very hopeful, uh, that we'll be able to complete with this, this funding. Um, the snow, uh, is, has melted and we're seeing a huge increase In use of our new dog park. Um, I'd like to remind the community that it's still brand new and yet to be completely finished. Uh, the fencing to divide the space and the gate, uh, were just saw, uh, installed just this past December. Right before the ground froze and the snow flew. Um, we do plan to complete more repairs, um, and improvements In the very near future, uh, that includes some repairs to the existing fencing. That includes some repairs to the existing fencing that was there on the wastewater side. The, we plan to put a grate in front of the drainage culvert there that's in the middle and install. Of course, the official permanent rules signage. As well as some, we have some funding left from that project to provide. You know, maybe some picnic tables and benches to improve that. And then we'll be adding the dog park to our branded wayfinding signage that has been installed throughout the community to help. Point those who are unfamiliar into the direction of the dog park. I've received quite a bit of communication around all of those things. So I really just ask that the community be patient and respectful as we. Use our small overloaded crew to get some of that work done. We do expect it to be done very, very soon. And we look forward to having a having a celebration of sorts. Once that's completely finished, we'll do do some sort of party over there and invite many others to come hang out their dogs. I was recently contacted by journalists from the magazine produced by the Maine Municipal Association to be interviewed. On the aspects of challenges of municipal employment. The article is covering. The challenges of attracting and retaining employees in various parts of the state. What is working, what needs to be improved or adapted? And that invite came from a. My involvement in a panel discussion at last year's or last fall's MMA conference in Bangor on a on a similar topic. I'll also be. Speaking soon, I'm pleased to say that I'll, I've been invited to participate as a panelist speaker at the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation. And the future's second communities leading on climate conference. That's on Thursday, May 11th at the University of Maine Wells Conference Center. That invitation comes from the great work that our town is doing with the Community Resiliency Partnership Funding. As well as our planning and efforts around EV charging and use of solar. With the Northern Forest Center, we were recently able to finalize some work. Regarding additional grant funding towards the engineering and design work of our airport terminal. It had been identified that the original scope was. Creating a variance in what it would take to cover the. The contracting of the engineers to do their side of the work. So we were, we were questioning where where that money was was going to come from. The Northern Forest Center was able to step in and help us obtain. Another fifty thousand dollars as part of a sub award to a much larger grant with with other communities involved. And the, the, the reason we were. Qualified for that was because of our goal to use forest products. And and sustainable methods within the design of that. So we're, we're thankful for their help. That's certainly going to cover any additional costs that that would have accrued for that project. Just a few reminders from the clerk's office. Nomination papers are available now through May 15th. This is for the special election to fill the council seat vacated by Mr. Goleeb. Those will need to be turned to the town clerk's office by Friday, May 4th, May 5th at 4:00 PM. The special election will be held on May 23rd, so please. You know, if you live here in Millinocket, get out and vote on that day to voice the opinion that you have for your candidate. Community members. With nomination papers out currently, Richard Angotti, Jim Bisque, Gilda Stratton and Tammy McGraw. Gilda Stratton has returned her papers. The others have not at this time. Please, if you feel inspired to try your hand at at this civic duty. And help the town move forward, please visit our town clerk's office, grab your nomination papers. We also anticipate that the school budget first public hearing and adoption will take place on May 11th. At our regular town council meeting. I'd also like to just remind the public that we do have several vacancies here. We do have some employment opportunities with the town of Millinocket. We are seeking a new code enforcement officer and licensed plumbing inspector. We have seasonal positions at our cemetery available. We have an assistance position in our code and assessing office. The new or the upgraded airport attendant position. We are in very real need for mechanic in our public works department. We do have several positions available on fire and EMS. As well as. Vacancies within or opportunities within the East Millinocket Police Department to help patrol for safety of our town. If you or someone you know is interested in any of these positions, please have them contact us. The applications are also available at millinocket.org. Under community and then employment. Municipal employment offers great schedules, incredible benefits, main state retirement. And many positions offer a very flexible workday. So I, I very much hope that you consider applying and joining our great team. I would also, this isn't on my report to be read, but I would also like to. Express how proud I am. Of the work of our administrative team, the work of our town's treasurer. And my involvement in the process. For completing. The municipal budget and the adoption. In accordance with our town charter. Beyond sixty days prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year. To me, that's a major accomplishment and I'm incredibly proud of my work and the work of my team and department heads. I, I don't know when the last time that happened was and I'm. I'm, I'm told it may have never happened before, so. Very, very proud of that and thank you all for your help along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and to tag along with that, I'd like to congratulate this council as well as being part of that process. Thank you, counselors, even even in different differing opinions and thought processes. I think this has been, this has been my first budget that has been this productive, this fast, almost seamless. And I've congratulated you and your staff many times as other counselors have. So I think it's an entire team effort. So thank you to this council. Thank you to the public who's attended all of these hearings and provided what that have emailed, that have written and and talked to us personally. I do want to extend that as well. The only thing that.
We certainly appreciate the the support of our our town council as well.
I just didn't want it to go unmentioned.
Thanks.
The only thing that I would have to add is, before I get to the rest of the council, is I think. I would like an update on when the town can expect a article in the newspaper. I know that for several months we've requested it. I see it up on your whiteboard, but I know it's something that you're probably working on and I know you're extremely busy. So is that something that the public can expect sometime soon?
Yeah, I'd say within the next issue or two. Now that this incredible weight is off our shoulders and my shoulders, I think I can, I can refocus some. Some energy and make that make that a monthly.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up to the rest of the council, Council Pelletier.
Yes, kudos for the grant. Senator, money being considered, get it to the next round and assess the dog park. That might just consider. Going one up in development heavily used. And goes of course for the invitation to our town manager. Great, you're participating in those. On the. Mentioned the school public budget, first public hearing, I believe it's the second. Add one presentation budget, is that a workshop or a public hearing?
This is really just a informal presentation. They only require one official special hearing and a vote, a little different from our side.
It is, you have to go through. They're fine with one.
That's correct.
How progressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier, any other council comment, Council Madore.
Just a question to the manager.
Sorry, just a question to the manager, the dog park. Will there be a, I guess for better term, a waste disposal bag dispenser that will be there for the use? Of people who are aiding using the dog park?
Yes, I think by the time we received it. The ground had frozen and we, we were unable to really install it. So Brian will have his screw down there to put those things in. We also have to install that sign in the ground too.
Right.
Several things got held up when the ground was too solid to dig.
Are we going to have an option for paper or plastic or?
No, it's just, it's just plastic in that one.
Council Higgins or Council Danforth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to say that's good news on the. On the downtown quarter and that's the face of our community. We just can't lose sight, I know we haven't got the money yet. And we still have to look at our downtown because that is our face now. But awesome job to the whole team on getting through this budget process. I have to say, this being my first time doing it, I think it went really smoothly and I want to say thank you.
Council Danforth.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you know, the whole time, Mr. Manager, you're reading this all as I could think of was terrific. Is that Charlotte's Web that has the web that is terrific in it? But you've got a lot of good news here, starting with the CDS that you've made it to the next round. A lot of times they do make it to the final round, so we can be very hopeful for that. And I like the fact that you're going outside the walls and the streets into other towns and that you were invited for the Governor's Council to. To be a speaker, so that speaks, that speaks volumes that you're being sought after. For some words of wisdom and to share what we've got going on here. I want to thank Northern Forest Center. Are they augmenting the NBRC grant that we had? We needed a little bit more money for the airport terminal, is that where that fifty thousand dollars is helping?
Yeah, that that'll be in addition to the NBRC funding.
Yep, to bring that around. And I just want to make mention that the, the library has their library update like Diana Kukawa said, promised. And I'm happy to read in there that they also applied for some CDS funding to replace their elevator and they made it to the next round too. So hopefully they'll be as lucky. We both will be, thank you.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Down to the public, any public comment on the manager's report? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Order number ninety-one dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chair, order number ninety-two, twenty twenty-three, providing for the execution of the wastewater warrant for April.
Order number ninety-one. I will skip to Council Madore, Council Madore, would you please do order number ninety-one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number ninety-one dash twenty twenty-three, providing for the execution of the town warrant for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. It is awarded the town warrant for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-one cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, second by Council Danforth, Council Madore, would you please do the heavy hitters?
Absolutely, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars to Central Equipment Company. That is for the tandem roller, payment roller. Ten thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and two cents to Daisarts, that's for ethanol fuel. We have three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-four cents to Elon Financial Services. That is the credit card payment for the school. Four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars to Millinocket Insurance Agency, that's the airport liability coverage. Sixteen thousand dollars goes to the Millinocket Memorial Library. And that is passed through and eighteen thousand, nine eighty, ninety-eight, fourteen. That is to the municipal review committee and finally one eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-five cents to our friends at First Power.
Any other council comment? Seeing none, down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, five zero. Order number ninety-two, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, my apologies on losing that sheet. Order number ninety-two, twenty twenty-three, providing for the execution of the wastewater warrant for April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. It is ordered at the wastewater warrant. For April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and seventy-eight cents is hereby approved.
Second, motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Madore, heavy hitters, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, heavy hitter, three thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents Mango truck. That's for truck parts. Five thousand, one hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents Oliver Associates, that's for the pump station. Thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents Pierce Edwards Design. And eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-five cents person power.
Thank you, any other council discussion? Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, five zero. Order number ninety-three dash twenty twenty-three, Council Danforth, would you please read?
Order number ninety-three dash twenty twenty-three, providing for approval of an application for a Victorio license for Circle K. It is ordered that the attached application for Victorio license is hereby approved for Max Convenience Stores LLC. Business address PO Box three four seven Columbus, Indiana? Doing business as Circle K four seven zero seven one one three seven nineteen Central Street, Millinocket.
Second, motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, five zero. Order number ninety-four dash twenty twenty-three, Council Higgins, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, order number ninety-four, twenty twenty-three, providing for the approval of an application for particular license for Young Young Bake Shop. There's ordered that the attached application for the particular license is hereby approved. For Maria Rowe, business address two fifteen Knott's Court Avenue, Millinocket. TBA Young Young, sorry, Young Bake Shop, two hundred and fifteen Knott's Court Avenue, Millinocket.
Second. Let the record reflect that there is only one yum in the original statement of yum yum.
Yeah.
I realize it is yum yum.
That's how great it is, you say it twice.
So. Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by, I assume, Council Madore? Council discussion. Yeah, we're trying. Seeing none down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor?
For both yums.
Every yum. Order number ninety-five dash twenty twenty-three, Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number ninety-five, twenty twenty-three, providing for approval of an application for Victorio's license for Gather Inn. It is ordered that the attached application for Victorio's license is hereby approved for. Marked of our business address one ninety-three Central Street, Millinocket, doing business as Gather Inn, one ninety-three Central Street, Millinocket.
Second. Motion made by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Madore, any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor, five zero. Order number ninety-six dash twenty twenty-three. Order number ninety-six dash twenty-two-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Order number ninety-six, twenty-two-three, providing for the approval of an application for particular license for Millinocket Variety. It is ordered that the attached application for particular license is hereby approved for Dan Nelson Business Address, one twelve Central Street, Millinocket, doing business as Millinocket Variety, one twelve Central Street, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Madore. Council discussion on the order, Council Danforth.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question perhaps for the clerk. Can you clarify on the back page where it says taxes occurring? Is it, is there a check mark saying no on part? All right, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? Five-zero. Order number ninety-seven dash twenty-two-three. Council Danforth, would you please read?
I'd be delighted to read this one. Order number ninety-seven test twenty-two-three, providing for establishment of a farmers and artisan market in Veterans Memorial Park. Whereas the Town of Millinocket Age Friendly Committee's three-year action plan was approved on May twenty, twenty-twenty-two by the Town Council. And whereas the action plan included the establishment of a farmer's market to be held each Saturday, starting June third, twenty-twenty-three through September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, from nine A M to twelve P M. And whereas the Age Friendly Committee established a farmer's market work group that researched best practice and planned the market with the best interest of the town in mind. And whereas Veterans Memorial Park was identified as the best location for the market, is now ordered that the Town Council approves the farmers and artisan market to be held in Veterans Memorial Park each Saturday, starting June third, twenty-twenty-three through September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, from nine A M to twelve P M. And is further ordered that all required fees as proposed are paid by the applicant at the town office prior to market participation.
Second.
Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Madore. Council Danforth, would you please speak to the order?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you will see there's some, um, supporting documents with this order. Um, this is an activity that came out of the Age Friendly Committee. Um, it originally, we'd hope to have it started a year ago. It took a year to make it happen. Um, and if you read the project background, you will see that I give, um, special attention or special kudos to Barbara Riddle Dvorak. She's a lifelong Maine AmeriCorps member. Um, this was her project, um, uh, to bring to fruition. And I know, uh, many at the, the town office have, have had some interactions with her and I wanna thank you, Diana, for helping help figure out the, the vendors, um, how to make sure the permitting, um, happens correctly and people, you know, come to the town office to pay the vendor fee and have the right license to participate. And, um, safety, like safety officer and Chief Tom Malcolm has had a big part of this too. So I really appreciate, appreciate the town's, um, support of this. I think it's, we've gotten a lot of great feedback. Um, I think it'll be, um, very welcome and we hope that this is the first year. Um, after this year, she will no longer have this position as AmeriCorps member. So we will be looking to find a way to sustain that and hopefully there'll be enough participation in those, um, that come as vendors, um, that we can have another leader come forward to carry this forward. But I'm excited about this opportunity, um, and thank all that are involved, so.
Council discussion on the order? I got a question. Okay, Council Madore, ask away.
Uh, basically, my question is, uh, have we had, what have you had so far for inquiries or signups as far as vendors are concerned? I, I mean, you, you get a great deal of, of, uh, excitement in the community about having a farmer's market, but if the vendors don't show up, you don't have much of a market to everybody excited about. So I was just wondering how that part of it is shaping up.
So, um, thank you, Council Madore. I wish Barbara was here or was on. I know she's got a growing list. I can't speak to it. I don't have it in front of me and I don't wanna misspeak. I don't know if, Mr. Malcolm, if you have any ideas yet or even Diana, um, based on some of the applications that have come forward, but, um, I agree with you. I know a lot of people have expressed interest in attending and purchasing. Um, and what does the list look like? But I've been assured that it's, it, it's robust at this point and hopefully it will grow.
Uh, you know, I was thinking eight. The number in my head was eight from an email. I was actually just furiously searching for that email on my computer.
I think I'll ma- I'll make a point to make sure we have updates and, and future meetings. Thank you.
I do have a question. How did you get a snazzy logo for your, for your committee? We don't, we don't have a snazzy logo, do we?
Thank you, thank you for calling it snazzy and Design Lab helped us create this back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, when we first formed. So, yeah, so it was a process. It wasn't just clip art.
Nice.
Appreciate that.
All right, down to the public on the order. Seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Five-zero. Order number ninety-eight dash twenty-two-three, Council Madore, would you please read?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Order number ninety-eight dash twenty-two-three, providing for the closure of municipal parking spaces for farmer and artisan market. Whereas the Millinocket Age Friendly Committee has created plans for a farmers and artisans market to be held at Veterans Memorial Park on Saturday, June third, two thousand twenty-three, uh, to September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from seven A M to twelve P M. It is ordered, the Millinocket Town Council authorized the closure of the Van Stan parking lot in Veterans Memorial Park each Saturday on June, from June third, two thousand twenty-three, to September sixteenth, June, two thousand twenty-three, from seven A M to twelve P M.
Second.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Danforth. Is there any council discussion, Council Danforth?
Yeah, I would just like to, um, just add a little bit more information as you, you saw the, um, actual farmer's market's gonna be nine to twelve. It's a three-hour time period and, um, we kept it at the three-hour, um, time period. Because if you go to four hours, then you would need a pot, porta potty there. I know that came up in discussion, um, the meeting that I missed. Your lengthy discussion on needing a porta potty there. So, um, it'll be blocked off at this time just for setup and to get ready. But the actual, um, farmer's market itself will be the three-hour time period. Thank you.
If you're interested in that discussion, it can be viewed by video and there's a nice article in the newspaper about it.
I have viewed it, thank you.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, down to the public. Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Five-zero. And order number ninety-nine dash twenty-two-three, Council Higgins, would you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chair, order number ninety-nine, twenty-two-three, providing for the acceptance of the community, community resist resilience partnership community action grant. Whereas the town of Millinocket was aw- was awarded a community action grant in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars. To purchase and install heat pumps in the municipal building, fire station and airport. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the acceptance of thirty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars in the community action grant for the purchase installation of heat pumps in the municipally owned buildings.
Second.
Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Madore. Any council discussion on the order? Seeing none, down to the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Five-zero. Man, order number one hundred dash twenty-two-three. Council Pelletier, would you please read?
Order number one hundred dash twenty-two-three, providing for allocation of American Rescue Plan Act on funding for pool skylight repairs. Whereas the skylight in the pool, uh, says have deteriorated and are in immediate need of repairs. And whereas the job has been inspected and estimated by a local contractor at sixteen thousand dollars. It is ordered that the town, that the Millinocket Town Council authorized town treasurer to allocate sixteen thousand dollars of local ARPA funds towards these repairs. No, this leaves an approximate balance of local ARPA, uh, hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Motion by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council Higgins. Any council discussion on the order? Council Madore?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is something we, not only is the pool become such a, you know, you talk about the library and some of the other things in town that are, that are drawing people to the community that are a great asset for the town, for families to wanna move in, wanna stay here. Uh, the pool is definitely in that same league and we need to go ahead and protect our investment in that pool. And if replacing the skylights for this amount of money is something we can do with ARPA funds and all the more reason to do it. Does it is actually protecting a very valuable asset for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Madore. I happen to agree with you. Any other council comment? Oh, Mr. Manager.
Oh, I'm not necess- I'm, I'm not a counselor. Um, however, I just want to clarify, um, there were, that was a, the note at the bottom of that order, I'm sorry, my laptop just died, go off memory. Um, said the remaining balance was one twenty-five. The remain, the balance before that sixteen thousand was a hundred and twenty-five. We're actually looking at a remaining balance. If this were to pass as, uh, on a hundred and nine thousand.
Okay, we'll, we'll let that record reflect that the, if this should pass, the ARPA funds would be at one oh nine, hundred thousand. Any other council discussion? Seeing none down to the public? Name an address, please.
Scott Levitt, three thirty Congress Street. I was, uh, Mr. Chairman, I was just looking and, uh, is this where it says it comes out of this budget? But is this for a two thousand twenty-four budget or is it coming out of the two thousand twenty-three?
I know the answer.
He taught me everything I know about this answer. Uh, that'll, it'll, 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 it'll be reflected in whichever budget it's, it, it's spent in, given the, 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 the date, right? If it's, if we were to pay for this work before, um, July first, thank you, Jesse, um, i- it'll be reflected in the twenty-three budget. If it's after that, it'll be reflected in the twenty-four.
Okay, uh, the reason I'm asking is I might be reading this wrong, but it looks like there's only gonna be seven thousand something left in that account on this, on what it's showing here compared to sixteen thousand here.
So at the time of the budget presentation, seven thousand or so was all that was expected to be paid in that next budget. Um, and that is, that's the expense side of it. So that's what was allocated already to be spent in the future. Uh, this would provide an opportunity to correct that information in the future.
Yeah, I was just wondering where it was showing seven thousand. If it goes into sixth, uh, July, it'd be sixteen thousand. So you'd be less money to pay out on that. That's all I was thinking. If I'm reading right.
Well, and if you look at the way our, um, um, but expense sheets were, were presented throughout the workshops that had, you know, previous fiscal year, um, and then the budget changes throughout that fiscal year and then the new year's budget. Um, so it, we usually, along the way, when I do like the quarterly updates, um, that additional column will show the changes like this one that take place throughout the year.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You must love any other public comment? Seeing none back to the council, all those in favor? Five-zero. Okay, so moving on to reports and communications, the Warrant Committee for May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, council meeting will be Council Pelletier and Councilor Bragden. Chair Committee Reports. Let's go to Council Danforth first and then I'll go to Council Pelletier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna mention, um, the spruce up event that happened last Saturday on Earth. They went very well. Um, that was part of the Age Friendly Committee's, um, work, but, um, Michelle McGinnis from Architide and Community, um, Coordinator, uh, led that effort. But those, those people that drove through, uh, downtown, maybe going to the Yum Yum Bakery on Saturday, had to walk right by us. Um, there were about twenty volunteers that showed up and we, we spread out different locations, Veterans Park, Crandall Park. Um, so a couple of people with Bobby over on the trail behind Granite Street School, Great Northern Park. I think we got a fair amount of sprucing up done, um, and had lunch at the Elks. Brenton Laura, um, Rollins, uh, cooked the, we cooked the hot dogs. We did not have pizza, Mr. Madore, as you prop- you had potentially suggested, but we had some really great hot ch- hot dogs and, uh, chips and, and, uh, and, and cake. Um, um, it just went very well and some, there's some pictures on Facebook, social media, but it was, it was a nice event. All those attended. Great weather, so. Just celebrating in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Danforth and for transparency and clarity. It's Yum Bake Shop. Not Yum Yum and it cannot be a bakery, that's a different license. I know, I know. I've been corrected myself.
You know, that event provided my four-year-old his very first experience seeing a live snake.
Council Pelletier, you're on.
Thank you, uh, Charter Review Committee will be, next meeting will be May third, Town Manager's Office from four-thirty to six-thirty. And we get to have any Zoom participation, so would be nice, but I, I understand it's still work. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier, for all you and your committee's work. Um, Events Committee, Tom, do you have anything to add? Progress, thank you. I do have one, um, addition to the Events Committee. Um, Amber Wheaton has received or will be receiving very shortly. I don't know. She, um, I don't know at this moment where it's at. All I know is as of a couple of days ago, she requested that Robin Stevens be in addition to the, um, Events Committee. I, um, I'm willing to put that on, so if the clerk can reflect that, please. And as soon as that application comes in, then it will be noted through your office. Um, you have anything to add? There's no more. Oh, no, I gotta get down to the two-minute public comment.
Oh.
At this moment, uh, will be two-minute public comment. If you have anything to say, step to the mic and name an address and skip it to two minutes.
Scott Levitt. Three thirty Congress Street. Um, I'm just addressing because we were talking about the dog park and that. I went down that way today and that sign for the playground should be replaced. I don't know if that's got the responsibility of the Playground Committee or what, but the Conberg Alley, that's near torn in half and should be replaced with a new sign or something. So people going in there, look and saying, oh, jeez, this looks nice, you know? But the sign is pretty near deteriorated in that. Thank you.
I'll have, uh, the manager take note of that.
Uh, actually, the signs should be in any day. Uh, they've been ordered, uh, to replace Herman Brugali, um, Delahanny Fields. Uh, and there's a third one. It's one of the other playgrounds, but yes, there's, there's three that are being replaced. They're or, on order and they should arrive any, any day now.
Excellent news. Any other public comment? Two minutes, please. Madam Clark? Thank you, Madam Clark. Any other public comment? Seeing none, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Higgins. All those in favor? We're out.